Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor and welcome to the City Council's May 14th Special City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited. First, I'd like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs may be joining us later. City Council members Maria Dorr, Betsy Nash, and Jen Woolison. Staff present are City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stoltay, and our Assistant City Attorney Denise Bazano, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing a welcome to our special May 14th City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. If you are participating in person, feel free to complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item is Item C, Agenda Review. Agenda Review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members. Does the City Council desire to modify the order of our agenda? Item D, Study Sessions. Study Sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. The study session item before us tonight is Item D1, Provide Direction on the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Here to introduce this item is our Public Works Director, Azelia Mitch.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Azelia Mitch, Public Works Director, here to speak to you about the capital improvement plan for the next five years. So on the agenda, I'll provide an overview of the projects that we are proposing to be part of the plan, the funding sources, how we've prioritized these projects, the new funding requests with a specific focus on the general fund, our five-year outlook, and we'll solicit your feedback and answer any questions. As you are rather familiar with, the CIP consists of seven overall project categories, and these categories primarily consist of programs that are focused on maintaining and improving our existing infrastructure. The sources of funding for these projects are, we have quite a number of funding buckets. The general fund provides a baseline of $3 million a year. That's an annual transfer to the general capital fund. However, over the last five years, we've seen that average be 4.7 million. The enterprise fund on water provides, sustains all of the improvements needed on the water infrastructure, and then we have quite a few special revenue funds as well as grants. How we prioritize the projects in the plan really depends on your priorities, which you said every year, the planning documents such as our condition assessments and master plans, the availability of funding, and then the staffing. So we do report out to you the status of our projects. We share with you whether a project is in the planning, design, or construction phase. The planning phase consists of really the project initiation. So we identify the needs, the objectives, goals. We assess whether additional studies are needed, such as feasibility assessments or condition assessments. We identify staff as well as our stakeholders, and then we develop the scope of work, the budget, and the schedule. Once that planning is completed, we move on to the design phase, and that involves taking a project from concept through final design, as well as the environmental clearances needed. Once the designs are completed, we develop a bid packet. So we issue the project, we go out to bid, and then once those bids are received and reviewed, we come back to you to award those projects. And throughout that construction process, we were inspecting the work. Now, there are quite a few programs that the status reported to you is ongoing, and that's because these programs consist of projects that are in various phases, whether in the planning, design, or construction phase. So nothing can be delivered without our staff, and up on the screen is an overview of our current organizational structure, as well as the number of vacancies that we do currently have. Our utilities group focuses on the delivery of water, stormwater, and landfill projects, as well as what it takes to operate those utilities. The CIP group is the core group that solely focuses on the delivery of capital projects, and these focus on our streets, our facilities, and any other categories where engineering is needed. Now, it's important to note that on the water side, some of the positions are solely funded by the water enterprise, and that makes the sort of moving of staff rather challenging, because those positions are funded solely by the enterprise. On the transportation side, our group focuses also on capital delivery, but also on our programming. So they manage our infrastructure, our traffic signals, our shuttles, and save routes to school program, and also work very closely with our planning group on development reviews. We do have a few vacancies here as well on both divisions. The Assistant Public Director positions are vacant, and we have a number of other positions that are waiting to fill. So a lot goes into sharing with you this proposal on the CIP. This year, we have, this coming fiscal year, we have 64 projects, an estimated $54 million in carryover, and we are requesting $43 million in additional requests. It's important to note that around a quarter of the new requests that we have really go toward maintaining the existing infrastructure to those programs, focused on streets, on facilities, aquatics, traffic, and water. And as you can see from this pie chart, the new funding request for this year, the traffic and transportation category is rather large, and that's because we have some significant projects, such as the Middle Avenue undercrossing. If we look at our total budget, so that means the carryover in addition to what we are requesting for this fiscal year and new funding, 50% of that, those projects will be funded through our special revenues. Let's see, 34 from water, and then, sorry, 34 from the general fund, and then 15 from the water fund. Those are the major sources of funding. Not included here are grants, because those vary year to year, and a lot of them are based on reimbursements. So we have to pay and then request for that reimbursement after. We look at our total, how are we spending that money? So our big categories for this year is we look at the total budget, the $97 million, traffic and transportation, as well as our streets and sidewalks. So of the new money that we need for our projects this fiscal year, $12 million, the request is for it to come from the general fund, because we do not have other sources of revenue to tap. This year, we are requesting $12 million to be transferred into the general capital fund. Now, we are estimating an offset of $7 million because of the grants that we have acquired and upcoming tax credits related to the renewable infrastructure that we're about to complete. So overall, the net request is for a $5 million transfer. The next slides, few slides, are to really walk you through the general fund requests as it relates to the different categories in the CIP. So for city buildings and systems, all of the new funding requests would tap the general fund. We're looking at adding funding to our city buildings minor. Our fire plan and equipment replacement project for the buildings here at Burgess, we do not have the sufficient funds to actually execute that project. We have renovations at the Burgess Pool, our continued implementation of the IT master plan, and as well as improvements to the exterior of our buildings, such as our roofs, that we have ongoing repair needs for. Parks and Recreation, $1.8 million request from the general fund, and this is really to sustain our ongoing parks and facilities. So we have, we're assessing the condition of the pool, the CO2 room. We have paths at our parks that need to be replaced, also playground replacements, and then the improvements on our sports fields and sport courts. Streets and sidewalks, we have an ongoing sidewalk repair program that we ask for annual funding for. And this year, we're coming to you requesting additional money for the high-voltage streetlight conversion. Now, this effort, we completed the conversion in Suburban Park and Flood Triangle last year. The next phase for this fiscal year is for West Menlo, and the future phase will be Linfield Oaks. On the stormwater front, we have two projects that we actually brought to you earlier this fiscal year. This is additional money that's needed to complete the Chrysler Pump Station, and also the repairs needed along San Francisco Creek by the Alma Street Pedestrian Bridge and Caltrain Crossing. On the traffic and transportation front, we were just here getting direction on the Middle Avenue Complete Streets. So the request for this fiscal year is for money to do the resurfacing from San Mateo Drive to El Camino. On the environment front, we have two projects that need additional funding. That is the electric vehicle chargers at the city facilities. We're currently in design, and we've been working with PG&E on the electrical needs on the meter front, so that we can actually build the EV charging facilities here and at the courtyard. And then we also have a very outdated irrigation system for our parks that really, that relies on a computer that is not an Apple IIe, but like it. And we are looking at opportunities there to obtain some grant funding, but this is pretty outdated infrastructure that we need, we need it to be replaced. Now, in the coming year, we are working very closely with our sustainability group to fully, more fully define our needs for electrifying this campus and other facilities. So once those scopes are more developed and we have a better sense of the funding needs, we will be bringing that back at a future point. So other non-general fund-related projects that we, well, some of them are general fund, some of them are not, but to highlight the larger efforts, we are working on Safer Bay, San Francisco Creek. We have the upstream of 101 improvements, plaza parking renovations that we need to embark on, the ongoing street resurfacing needs, as well as our plans to continue to implement the Vision Zero Action Plan and focus on safety and safe routes. As you can see, I like pie charts and graphs. I hope that you can, this gives you a good visual. We have by category quite a few projects ahead of us, ahead of us in terms of the five-year outlook. We have Safer Bay. That is a $67 million project effort that we fortunately have grant funding for and matching from PG&E and Meta. We have quite a few large transportation projects, the Middle Avenue Undercrossing, Quiet Zone, and also Great Separation. And then on the waterfront, we have large infrastructure needs as it relates to storage. And some of these needs are unfunded. So on the water side, this is an enterprise, so we will be looking at a funding study. We'll take a look at opportunities on loans from the state revolving fund through the Water Board. We'll also be assessing bonds. So the intent here is to get, to work closely with a consultant and assess what options we have to finance the future needs. We did just complete a stormwater master plan, and this identified $39 million in needs, and this just focuses on the condition of our storm drain system, not our flood protection needs. That is significant, $39 million in need. So we need to work with a consultant as well to assess how to finance these improvements. And of course, there's Great Separation, which will be a significant undertaking. So the next steps are, we are here tonight to seek your direction, receive your input. On May 23rd, there will be a public budget workshop, the hearing, public hearing on June 11th, and final adoption on the 25th. So in terms of direction, it's, we need your feedback on the new request for fiscal year '24-'25, as well as the five-year outlook. Your insight as it relates to strategies on how to best manage the minor capital needs. A lot of our five-year plan consists of programs that really focus on the existing infrastructure, but it can be hard to then evaluate and prioritize additional needs. Are there any projects that we should delay, or any other projects that we should replace with new projects? And with that, we'd be very happy to seek your direction.
Thank you for the presentation and bringing it back to the council. Are there any clarifying questions before we take public comment? Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our study session Item D1, Provide Direction on the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Thank you. For those who have their hands raised, to gauge the number of speakers, this will be the final call for public comment on study session Item D1. Please engage that hand feature, press star nine, or complete a speaker card. Okay, we are looking at a total of three speakers, and our first speaker will be Julie Shanson, followed by Catherine.
Hi. Thank you, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Excellent. So I really appreciated this breakdown of what's before you for capital improvement projects. And I know you got a letter today from Menlo Together encouraging you to look at the priorities that come out of the environmental justice element. I just want to echo that and say that the area of the city that's been, had deferred maintenance the longest has been the area of the Bell Haven neighborhood. And so I would like you to consider that as a weighting factor when you're looking at what to complete this year and what not to complete this year. Please prioritize improvements that happen in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Catherine, followed by Karen Grove.
Good evening, Council. This is Catherine Dumont, Menlo Park resident, and I wanted to thank the staff for this report, the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. And it's great to see funding for projects that support active transportation, infrastructure, climate resilience, and housing on city-owned parking lots. I think one of the big misses that I noted, that I see is that there's no mention of bike lanes and related safety infrastructure on El Camino Real. And this is, would be a real missed opportunity, not a huge investment of money, but very timely because of the Caltrans repaving that's going on along the entire length of El Camino. 10 years ago, Menlo Park had a vision for bike lanes and even completed a million-dollar study with strong public support for removing parking and installing bike lanes. Now, 10 years later, we have more neighbors, more traffic, and I think it's time to revisit that. Out of, say, like 19 of the cities along the El Camino Real corridor, 15 of them are moving forward with plans for bike lanes. Our neighbors to the south, Los Altos and Mountain View, Palo Alto, and north, Atherton is doing a study, and Redwood City has some quick-build projects. So it's, it's a project that will meet, that moves us towards the priorities of addressing climate change, taking action, and improving quality of life. And it's an equity issue for the folks who need to use El Camino by foot or by bike or by bus. Gives them a safer way of getting around on a major north-south corridor. It's the only continuous north-south corridor in our area. So I urge you to take another look at this. Let's not miss out on a once-in-30-year opportunity to take advantage of Caltrans repaving dollars. And we can negotiate with Caltrans for design and inclusion of more high-visibility pedestrian crossings and other desirable design improvements, as they've been doing in Palo Alto. Thank you.
And next is Karen Grove.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. And I'm, I just, I want to also echo the Menlo Together letter. I'm gonna focus on the affordable housing, you know, the housing element program, 4GH, 4HG, the one about affordable housing on the parking lots. In order to produce affordable housing, if you look at our history, and if you look at other cities, it is really necessary to have a local city contribution of funds. That makes us competitive for a lot more funds from state, county, and local sources. And for example, and this may not be a CIP thing, but the reason I'm, traditionally it hasn't been, but the reason I'm bringing it up now is that our BMR fund is fully allocated. We once had $10 million in there that was sitting there a long time, but we're in a good practice of allocating it on a regular basis, and so it is fully allocated. And it's not clear how quickly it will be refilled. It used to be filled by commercial and housing fees, because we were not allowed to require inclusionary BMR housing before the Palmer fix passed in 2018, I think. So now it's just commercial development that contributes, and it comes in big chunks when a project gets, I think, entitled as the trigger. So that's really important to know what that forecast is. And if not, then I think, at least in the back of your minds, you should be thinking about the fact that we're gonna have to make a contribution that is significant. And just a quick offer, I noticed that one of the things on the plan is Sharon Heights High-Voltage Streetlights or something. And I do not know what that is about, but I live in Sharon Heights and have not given a second thought to street lighting. So just in case that's helpful, and I'm sure my one voice is not gonna make the difference on that, but I would throw that out there. And since I have a few more seconds, I looked up some similar projects in nearby cities. In Mountain View Lot 12, I believe, the city contributed $4.5 million. And San Mateo contributed $5.5 million, and Oakland recently contributed $19.5 million. So we should be planning to contribute, you know, significant sums. And also, please check my data. I'm not a professional, but that's the idea. Thank you.
Seeing no further hands or cards. Oh, apologies. Did have one additional hand raised. So our final speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, Council and staff. I sent you an email that made a very simple recommendation in order to guarantee funding for the environmental justice element and safety elements projects once that they're fully completed, and that is to redirect 0.05% from the total for all the other projects, I think it was somewhere around $44 million, and leverage some of that money with what you're already gonna do that may be a part of the transportation or maybe a part of the environment, maybe one of the environment processes. We can do this. It just is going to mean being creative and thinking differently than we normally do. You know, the CIP and the budget is very clear, and it's really nice to have a report like this. I really appreciate that, and I want to thank the staff. But again, let us think out of the box. Let us think a little bit differently than we normally do, and consider just a percentage. And that can be done in a number of ways, given that we, of the number of projects that we have, I think it was seven. I couldn't pull the page up quick enough. At any rate, thank you very much, and that's all I need to say.
Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for all the public comment that was just provided. Bringing it back to the council to see if there's anyone that would like to kick off the discussion. Councilmember Nash.
So I have a question, and that is whether it makes sense to put the housing element on the list of plans that are being considered for priority. It certainly seems like it would be a good idea, and also including the environmental justice and the safety element. Is there a reason why it was left, why it was not included?
So the CIP really focuses on granular projects as it relates to the housing element that will trigger improvements in the infrastructure as the developments come in. And so that undergoes, those planned reviews take into account, you know, the infrastructure needs. So we did bring So we did bring forward to you last week, for example, the water supply assessment. So we are, we are looking at the needs and the next, the next update on the urban water management plan, for example, will take into account the growth associated with the housing element. So these are not discrete, these are large plans, but the project implementation then is discrete and gets, gets incorporated into the CIP based on the infrastructure needs.
I have a follow-up question on that. So I'm curious here. So it mentions Safer Bay and other efforts to address flooding as well as stormwater issues. And I could imagine that some of those will address environmental justice issues that have come up in the environmental justice element. So would you track that those are connected to the environmental justice and safety elements?
Absolutely. These elements are guiding documents. And in terms of assessing the needs, they're the guiding documents to then inform the projects that we will bring forward to then request funding for.
That's helpful.
Part of the strategy.
That's very helpful, and I almost wonder if, when this comes back to us, if there could be another column here that says which element or which part of our plans this connects to, if it's the housing element or if it's the EJ element, so we understand how the staff is tracking this connection.
Yes, so one step that we have started to do on our master spreadsheets is to really, for, for example, identify this project is a recommendation from a planning document. So we can, we will definitely work at developing that much more comprehensively.
Can you also include the safety element on it as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for all the work, and I appreciate really how our city is using these planning documents to strategically look at the CIP. I also want to just reflect, I've been coming to council meetings for, I think, like eight years or something, and the gatehouse fence was a lingering CIP project that kind of like strung along year after year where it wasn't like a red-hot priority, but it was something that kind of needed to be done. And I'm super excited when I drive down Ravenswood and to see it shining white and kind of completed and not deteriorating. So a lot of these things take time. This is more for members of the public and can just require some patience, waiting for the right staff to be at the right place and the right opportunity. I also want to just let the public know that each one of these items likely has a constituency that really cares about these items. And so it is hard to kind of think about removing something or bumping something. So I just wanted to put that out there. One thing that has been in my mind since our goal-setting, really, actually over the last couple of years, are these like projects that kind of live nowhere but that are not high-level priorities, but are kind of like one-offs. So I might be thinking about the sound wall by Kelly Park or additional pickleball court capacity or the El Camino Real bike lane issues. That could be potential CIPs. And like, I think a lot of us, well, I want El Camino Real bike lanes, but I'll take one less potentially controversial sound wall by Kelly Park. I don't know if there's anyone against that. So how, so my understanding is if it's not in the CIP, then it will not be worked on in the next five-year period. And so where does that project kind of live? And how and when, if ever, does it rise to the level that somebody is funding it and planning to work on it?
Yes, great question. Specific to, for the example on the sound walls, our proposal, we have our parks minor program, and we also have our sport field program as well. So as you will see, we have been changing the project descriptions in, in the proposal to then include improvements such as noise. So looking at things more comprehensively in terms of our needs for our sport fields, part of that being, and sport courts, part of that being noise mitigation. So we, we, we listen. Part of it is programming, since we have 64 projects. So part of it is, do we, so one of the things that we did this year, we had many little tiny water projects, for example. So, and they don't compare in scale to, you know, great separation. I, I don't think anything compares in scale to great separation. You know, so maybe that's a, that's a, not a great example. But we are trying to consolidate our projects so that we are approaching this on a program basis. And part of the, the scope of work will include, for example, on that noise mitigation. And we will report out to you our funding, existing funding that we have and new needs based on the, the projects included under that program. So they're not, they're not lost. They are being tracked on a program basis on these, the programs that we have that to improve the existing infrastructure.
So I'm a little confused about what it means to be a program, then? Maybe the differentiation between the program and the project? This is kind of the, the whole thing that kind of scrambles my brain a little bit. So the, the sound, using the sound wall as an example, that's great that it's being thought holistically in terms of like activity fields and, and parks. So when does the staff or when does the council or the community review those programs? Is that part of like the Parks and Rec Master Plan, like, review process? Or how does that, I guess if I'm a champion of the sound wall, how, and how do I get that, how do I get that to have attention? Or where do I get to assert, how, how does staff know when to work on it and what to invest in it?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wilson. So Nikki Nagaya, Deputy City Manager. And I think in this particular case, one of the other funding buckets, I think, is, is worth noting here is the Community Amenities Program. And so as part of the development efforts in the Bayfront zoning districts, when projects have come forward with bonus-level development, they're paying into a community amenities fund. And so that money has been accumulating over the last several years. And so one of the items that was called out in the staff report but isn't highlighted in the tables right now with the funding proposals is an effort to do more community engagement and make sure that we have an implementation plan for, for that funding. So I think that's one particular quote-unquote "program", but we're, I think we've already done a lot of engagement through both the, the prior efforts around community amenities with the subcommittee's work. We, we know, we've heard a lot about the things that are desired, but what we need to do next is develop that implementation plan to get from high-level ideas to numbers on a page that you're actually appropriating funds towards and being able to scope, scope those projects out in more detail. So that's, I think, one example where, because there's funding that's accumulated, the real constraint is staffing. And so we're, we're looking at completing BHCC as a major milestone this week. There will be inevitably some, some follow-up items for our capital team to, to complete. But that's a major turning point. When getting the building completed, we'll be able to then shift those resources to, to other efforts, one of which might be implementation of the community amenities plan.
Thanks. And following up on like El Camino bike lanes and sidewalks on Middle, is it fair to say that if one or both of those were added to the CIP list, that something would have to fall off the list that's on there?
Indeed. What we are presenting to you is actually a plan that, one, you saw the vacancies that we have. Our goal is obviously to fill them. We have quite a few efforts that will require staff to really tackle, such as the funding needs as it relates to water, transportation, and, and the ongoing Safer Bay. So we are proposing to you a plan that we hope to be successful in, as long as we fill these vacancies.
I totally appreciate that. I'm just doing this also more for constituency education. So then my question becomes, for El Camino Real bike lanes, for example, I know that the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition this past weekend did a ride, and there's a lot of people in different cities trying to move forward that. Does Menlo Park have a timeline of when we would even be looking at that? Because Caltrans is about to repave kind of south of us, but when is their repaving coming to our area? And then is the idea that that would be revisited as a CIP, potential CIP, to, to be ready for that?
Yeah, so I, I can chime in on this one. So I was the project manager for the study that Ms. Dumont spoke about in 2013. And at the time that that was completed, the direction we got from the council was to prioritize the crossings of El Camino as opposed to the north-south route, while we then monitor and engage with our neighbors and make sure that what we may construct on El Camino isn't just an isolated bike lane within Menlo Park, but part of a regional system. The Caltrans efforts to repave in Santa Clara County do end at the county line and do not include Menlo Park or sections north into San Mateo for what's currently on the horizon right now. El Camino Real in Menlo Park was last repaved about 15 years ago. So their efforts to overhaul and repave here are a number of years off at this point. But we are partnering with Atherton. We're an active stakeholder participant in their study, which does extend all the way south to Valparaiso, where we share right-of-way of El Camino within our jurisdiction. So we're continuing to, to monitor and be, be engaged in those discussions. But really, our priorities over the last 10 years have been implementing the Oak Grove bike lanes, implementing the bike lane gap closure on Ravenswood. As you lead into El Camino Real, both of those efforts have been constructed. And then we have in, in the CIP, efforts for crossing improvements at, for pedestrians at Ravenswood and Sinal and Robal avenues as well. So that, that's been our focus, but we're continuing to be engaged in the, the north-south kind of bike lane projects as well. Thanks for letting others ask some questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. I have a question regarding the projects where we have to pay upfront and we receive a reimbursement. Do you know how many projects there are where that's required?
So we have in Attachment C, we've identified those projects that have, have grants, and most of these grants are on a reimbursement basis. So Safer Bay, for example, is a large one. That's a $50 million grant. And so that is an example. We are working on some of these transportation projects. We're actually working with the Transportation Authority to, for them to lead some of the project management. So as part of the grants, they would actually keep the grant funding and use it toward the project, so there wouldn't be this going back and forth in terms of, you know, reimbursement. That's not too, we still have a matching needs, but, but we are working with them on, on streamlining some of that, that, the, the grant management process.
Thank you.
And it's 16 grants.
And there's 16.
Or 16 projects.
16 projects.
Yes.
Then my, my next question is, for the, since Councilmember Wilson used this as an example, the, the wall, the sound wall, is it possible to apply for any of the Department of Transportation funding for the wall?
Yeah, so we, we have been monitoring the funding opportunities. I think one of the sources that we were closely tracking was the Reconnecting Communities Funding Program through federal, federal sources. And so I think overall, possible, those sources have been highly competitive. And so we're not certain that we will be successful, but, but those are, that's one of the likely sources that may be able to provide some, some funding.
Do you think, and, and I'm not sure if this law became effective January 1st or, or June 1st, and that is Justice 40? And how projects are mandated to be prioritized that are related to environmental justice?
Yeah, I don't know the, the effective date either, but I, I think, as I understood, Justice 40, it's a strategy that, that all or most of the federal grant programs are using to ensure that they're allocating resources to neighborhoods that have been underserved or underfunded in, in the past. And so I think, yeah, in that context, all the DOT grants, I think, are, are using that framework.
Okay, so it's possible that the sound wall would fall into that, under that category?
So, ye- yes, I, I think so. But we'd have to do a, a close read of the, the grant requirements. I think, a- as we've looked at the Reconnecting Communities Program, it, it seems that large infrastructure or holistic infrastructure plans or programs are the things that may, may compete the best as opposed to individual projects, like a, a sound wall alone. I think they're really looking for like a, a package of, of things. So that's something that, that we can take a, a closer, closer look at.
Thank you. And just to continue the discussion around funding, the BRIC grant, is that annual? Is that something the city of Menlo Park can apply for again? Or do we have to wait a certain amount of time?
Yes, that, the program, we were lucky to be awarded the BRIC grant in their first round of funding, the first year of its existence. It is generally an annual-to-biannual call that they put out, but I think our likelihood of success, given that we've been awarded a prior large sum, is, is probably something that we need to think, think about. So it doesn't say, we, we're not precluded from applying, but I think our chances of an award are, are probably less likely than, than a neighboring city that hasn't been awarded.
And for the BRIC grant, I know there's different areas you can apply for. So I don't know if that's a, a factor. I think there's a communications infrastructure. I don't have the paper in front of me, but there's different categories you can apply for. Does that make a difference as far as one city exhausting one category versus they just look at it all the same?
That's a good question. So I think like, like I said earlier, there, there's nothing in the FEMA grant requirements or guidelines that are, would preclude us from, from applying. I think it's more a matter of assessing the, how competitive our application would be for, for what we submit for. And yeah, as, as you said, there, there are a number of things that they will provide funding support for, but it's more a matter of, I think, like in the first round of, of funding that we received in 2020, or were initially identified for in 2020, the, the num, we, we were the largest funding award in the entire US and also had the, the kind of private partner funding leverage as well. So, yeah, nothing that would preclude us from applying. Again, we just would want to assess the, the competitiveness of the application.
Thank you. My next question, I'm actually just going off of the presentation. Just wanted to find out about the school, I think it was La Entra. The, is it the sports field renovation? Is this, is it something that the city, the school is also providing funding for? Or is the city paying for the whole project?
There is a funding agreement with the school district. But we, we lead the project.
Thank you. And for the, under the environment part of the presentation, how many electric vehicle charges does the $600,000 cover?
You give me a moment. I have that information.
Thank you. And in all fairness, I did not submit any questions ahead of time. Just a hard B to the question is, in what level are they?
I will have to get back to you. I actually had the number right, but I will have to follow up on the actual number. We were assessing the parking lot right here and then the, I think the courtyard has two and then the additional number by the gym. But I'll have to get back to you on the total number.
Thank you. And just a, the way I'm thinking about this, are we, are we looking to have the same number of chargers as we do electric vehicles? Is that the goal? Or is it half?
No, so the great thing about electric vehicles is, one, their charging capacities are increasing rapidly. A lot of it depends on the department and the use. So we would actually have a charging management software that would then inform us if we have to charge a vehicle once a week or every three days. So no, luckily, there have been a lot of improvements on the vehicle front. So we need fewer charging facilities than, you know, so it's not a one-to-one. We can actually optimize and be much more effective with our, the capital needs on the charging front.
And thank you. And the charging management software is included in the cost? Or is it additional?
I would have, it's now, it's sort of, I'll have to assess if that was included, but it's now part of just like what, what we need to actually operate the system and manage. So it would be an incremental cost if it's not included in the request, but it's nominal compared to the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Any, Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, following up on the mayor's question about La Entrada, I have a question. I know previously, earlier this year, was it last year? We heard from Bellhaven Elementary School about a big redo on the park and the yard and the buildings there. And I was curious of where that fits in here and how Menlo Park is going to be involved if that's on our list. I haven't had a chance to review that, but it just came to mind.
Yeah, so I think the construction at Bellhaven Elementary is underway. And we've been having conversations with school district officials about what kind of partnership opportunities may exist, but those are pretty early in the process. Their construction timeline is first to redo the buildings and then they'll follow up with the open space and kind of parks and kind of play structure areas to follow. So I think there will be opportunities for partnerships related to Bellhaven School fields as well. And we'll also need to renegotiate the use agreements with the school like we have with the Los Luminous and MPCSD as well.
Okay, but right now it sounds like there's no funding in here that's allocated towards supporting that project?
That's correct, because there's still some additional work that needs to be done to scope out exactly what that would look like as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. A question that I am reflecting from one of the emails we received in advance. Efforts, you mentioned Vision Zero. And one of the efforts we just talked about last week was creating the permanent bike lanes, buffered bike lanes and changes near the Nealon Park. Where is that reflected here in the, in the CIP proposal?
So it's under the Middle Avenue Complete Streets Project. So that includes the traffic calming modifications, the pilot, as well as the resurfacing.
Great, thank you. I also have some opinion, if we're moving from questions, I do have some thoughts I would love to share, but also want to leave room for questions if others have questions still.
You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. On the theme of parking, I know in here, under streets and sidewalks, the plaza renovations for Plaza 7 and 8 are on hold. And in conversation with staff, it seems like moving that forward would help in the process to then also look at the downtown parking lots and figure out which ones are we focusing on for development. And because of the connection there, first, I'd love a confirmation of, is there a connection between improving and updating Plaza 7 and 8 and this effort to move forward with an RFQ or RFP process with the parking lots? Are these connected at all and would moving that forward help the process for affordable housing in the parking lots?
We are working with our city manager on taking a strategic and comprehensive approach. So we've been working closely on identifying the lots that would be more amenable to housing than that leaves. We do have funding for Plaza 7 and it's really solidifying then the parking needs to assess when then we take a look at the timeline as well as it relates to the existing conditions. But we want to make sure that there's, that we have been coordinating with our city manager, with our planning team to then assess the, there are two efforts, one, the restoration of the plazas as well as the parking lot, downtown parking lot assessment. So we're coordinating.
Thank you. And this actually raises another question for me. Last year when we had the Berkeley graduate students present their proposal for how to have housing and parking and everything, all the needs met downtown. I believe in both of the models they created, there was a parking structure. And as we think about projects like this, to do a renovation, would that be followed five or three years later, let's say, by taking away that parking lot and building a parking structure if needed to replace parking downtown? And so I'm curious if, I know this is all hypothetical because we don't have an RFP, we don't have a parking garage proposed, but I am curious about timelines if there is any, how close those timelines might be in a feasible hypothetical world?
Let's see. So I think the basic message for this evening would be that there needs to be a separate kind of council study session specific on downtown to work through those things. As a, for instance, though, if there's, identify that there's a need, desire for structured parking, that will be expensive. So that's like the important thing, kind of takeaway. That's depending on the amount of land that's consumed for housing development. That's going to be displacing parking. There's most likely going to be a need to replace that parking. The extent of the replacement is subject to some debate. But to put parking into some kind of structure is going to be very expensive. So that all needs to come together with that sort of comprehensive view. It's difficult to move forward with one discrete decision on some various things like moving forward with the redo of Plaza 7, we think is premature right this second. After that council study session, I believe personally that Plaza 7, as an example, the one next to Trader Joe's, would be one that the city would be well-served to redo as is. There's other plazas that have greater potential for, whether it's residential development or a parking structure, Plaza 7 is likely not to be one of those. But we don't want to move forward with Plaza 7 until we have that comprehensive discussion with the council and the community.
Thank you for that explanation. And still would, just following up on that, do we have a, is that a study session that's in the works? Or is that a?
I'd say it's in the works. When it's going to happen, I do not know. All things considered, it's most likely not going to be till late summer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I will stop there.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. Councilmember Nash?
So I, very similar questions. Sort of following along that same line, is there any way to speed up the downtown parking lot study? I know that there's no additional funding being requested this year. Is there any way to, you know, would more funding make the project go faster? Or is it something where there's just finding consultants, doing the RFQ? All of that is on a set timeline and there's really no way to expedite that?
We need to fill the vacant positions. That would be, this is a transportation project. We've been working very closely, like I said, with our city manager and also our CDD, our planning group. And so it will be a joint effort, but it's key for us to fill the positions in the transportation group. And I do have an answer on the EV chargers.
Great.
So, found it. So two at the, a total of 10 at Burgess and two at the Corporation Yard.
Thank you for the information.
And are those level, what level?
Level two.
They are level two. Thank you.
Following up, I appreciate that we need staff and we need vacancy, we need to fill these vacancies. And so hope if anyone's listening excited about transportation, that they consider applying. But I want to check too, because I've had some helpful conversations with folks. There's the Kiki, Kiku Crossing, some other projects that instead of using a formal RFP process, they used an RFQ or RFI or RFO process that provided some elemental ideas out to the consultants of, I know that's a conversation we need to have first with the council about how many units, what's the size, et cetera. But that some of the feasibility study could be wrapped up in the request for qualifications or interest that nonprofit developers or affordable housing developers bring back to us. And I'm curious if that's a process that city staff is considering to help expedite the process once you have staff on hand.
Yes, so absolutely. We actually have some familiarity with the Kiku Crossing. So we are looking at quite a few options.
I was also, if you could explain very briefly about this streetlight. It is not up at Sharon Heights. My understanding is it's on Windsor Drive and Robert S. Drive in, Menlo is where we're talking about right now. And that it's because it's a series. I'll let you explain.
Yes, these are high voltage circuits. They, one, the infrastructure as it relates to transformers, many of those are just obsolete, very difficult to replace. There's a safety component that we're concerned about. So they do need to be replaced with. And we'll take the opportunity there also to change out the streetlights to LED. But these do not have to be high voltage.
I'm very supportive of that. I hear regularly from constituents that it is a problem. They do not have streetlights. So thank you. I had a question on the police radio replacement. And I don't know if this is appropriate, but I will ask, is three years, phasing it in in three years appropriate? Or is it something that, to me, it sounded like we might want to do it faster?
We can certainly work with our police department. They're leading that effort. Their assessment right now, we are doing upgrades to the HVAC system. So they were waiting for that project to be completed so that they could start the radio replacement. They did note that it was a two-year effort, but we can follow up with them and see if it could be done faster.
And that would come back to us as part of the budget? Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo something that Councilmember Wilson shared about the El Camino projects or opportunities for bike lanes there and echo my support and hope that we can get to that at some point when, when they're doing repaving or hopefully sooner, because I know that's a long ways out. And something that I'm thinking about in the context of our conversation, was it last week or the time before, where we heard that the middle undercrossing is actually going to be $62 million? Sixty, max, max. But seeing just how big that is and how long it will take to do that, it makes me wonder, could we, at the same time, also improve bike infrastructure along our section of El Camino? So, you know, in the meantime, we have a safer, cheaper option for folks to safely bike from Burgess Park to West Menlo and vice versa. And I'm not suggesting that we add this to the list now, because I know this is far off, but I just want to express my concerted desire to see us move forward on that in conversation with Caltrans. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
I had one more question, which has been raised by several people before. And that was just, how do we get the extension of the Middle Avenue sidewalks onto the list? Is that under one of, is that being grouped under one of the other projects, like the sidewalk repairs? It doesn't really sound like it was. Or is that a unique project?
It is, it would be a unique project, just like the effort on Santa Cruz Avenue. The sidewalks, state law. We are not required to build sidewalks. We take the opportunities when new projects come to us through the plan review process and we condition development to build them. We do address the tripping hazards as it relates to city trees and we address hazards that we get notified. But we currently do not have a plan to actually address all the sidewalk gaps because of the responsibility and the cost. So the CIP does not include new sidewalks.
I will be hopeful it makes it on next year. Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe just to clarify, so when the council had adopted the, or provided direction on the next steps for the Middle Complete Streets Project in the fall of 2022, we did a cost estimate for what it would take to close the gaps on the north side of Middle Ave. And it's about 300, sorry, 3,000 feet of sidewalk. And using some other recent projects that we've completed, it's roughly $4 million. And that's just for the sidewalk gap closures. That would not be reconstructing curbs and kind of making everything look uniform and complete. That's just like gap closure. And since there is a continuous facility on the other side of the street already, excuse me, I think I misspoke, that the existing sidewalks on the north side, the south side is where the gaps are. So it's around $4 million. And there are a number of utility poles and large heritage trees that would need to be removed if we proceeded with that project. So given all the complexity and the short-term needs for the Complete Streets Project, it's not currently in the CIP and would be a multi-year effort, we would anticipate. Because there's sidewalk completion projects don't compete well for grants. So it's most likely going to need to be locally funded as well.
Thank you. That's very helpful. As people are building, are they being required to complete the sidewalks in front of their property?
Generally, yes. It depends on the scope of exactly what they're building. But for the most part, a complete renovation of the home does trigger the need for frontage improvement requirements along the improvement of sidewalks.
That would be great. I am aware of several projects in the area that were not required, even though they were complete rebuilds. So whatever we can do to emphasize that that, getting a sidewalk, that's, would be helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you. I know at the beginning, before the tables in the agenda packet, the city staff called out three areas where special financial planning and evaluation of funding options would be needed around water, stormwater and transportation for the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing and also for the Caltrain grade separation. And I was curious if you all have a sense or ideas for that financial planning or options that we should be considering? Or at what point will there be space for that kind of conversation to talk about what's needed to move these discrete, very large projects forward?
Yes, these processes are highly involved, city council as well as the public. Options to finance on the waterfront, for example, we do have state revolving loans that we can apply for. On stormwater, there are property-related fees that we can assess. That effort typically, you know, involves quite gauging the willingness to pay from property owners. But there are quite a few options, so the step would But there are quite a few options, so the step would be for us to hire a consultant to assess the options and then uh present those to you through a study session to then obtain direction on which options are the most viable. Thank you.
I have a a couple more questions and then we could actually put up the, I think it was the last slide about direction requested. And this is on capital project delivery staffing. I think this is page nine. So just wanted to find out um if you you have listed on here the Safe Routes to School program and if there are a list of items that you have, program items, or are they more around um capital improvement? Like, is it infrastructure?
So in terms of your feedback, it it is focused on infrastructure.
And is this a partnership with the school districts, or is this something the city's doing on its own, or is it just the school district?
Are you inquiring about the Safe Routes to School program, like what the scope of that is?
Yes, and it doesn't include infrastructure?
Yes, yeah, yes and yes. So it's a comprehensive program um where stakeholders from each of the um local schools meet with staff and the consultant who's supporting the program that we've brought in a number of years ago. And covers um both education, um encouragement programs and infrastructure. So those um particular staff, people leading the effort and the consultant aren't generally the ones designing or building the infrastructure, but they relay that feedback back to the the others on the the uh staff team.
And because we have multiple school districts, how does that work? Do you prioritize school districts? Or is it only school districts that engage directly with the city on their own, or is there outreach to each school district?
Yeah, there there's outreach to each of the school districts and there's a a monthly um uh task force meeting that all the districts are invited to participate in. And I think we've had varied um participation in in the past. It kind of varies year to year which schools are the most active, but we we do have contacts and engagement with each of the districts as well.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, I believe, on this is how does it work with the charter schools? The schools that are renting from the school district but are not necessarily a part of the district?
So, good question. Um generally, we have safe routes to school, suggested route maps for each of those schools um that are located within Menlo Park, regardless of whether they're a charter school, a private school, a public school. Um all of those are currently shown on on the city's website. In terms of then direct engagement, um most of the engagement with the current charter schools happens through um the district that they're leasing from for for them for the most part. So just on a practical basis, that's that's where we're hearing um most of the the feedback from our public school partners across the 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 three primary districts, uh Los Luminous, MPCSD and and Ravenswood City Schools.
Okay, I I bring this up because I drive past Kip, which is located at Willow Oak School at least three days a week around traffic hour. And I'm not sure, because I have not looked at the safe routes map, if what is act- what activities are actually happening around safe routes at that school, but most importantly, I'm hoping that there is some type of infrastructure project on the horizon, just because of the level of traffic, the speed, and then most of the cars I see are turning left from Willow into the school, so which means they have to wait. And then coming out, there's also a challenge there. And I know there's another exit out of the school, not sure if that is accessible to parents. But there's just a lot of volume of traffic there. Let's see. And then my next question is just about, and this is referring to one of the public comments about allocating funding, a percentage of funding, just to make sure that there is like this marker, and I know Ms. Metu did say what is already being done around the environmental justice element and safety element and how to include it in CIP. Does it make sense to allocate some funding from CIP to make sure it's like a placeholder or something we know that's coming?
Yeah, so I think this this is a good question, um and one that I think we we may need to have a little bit more internal discussions on to bring you back some recommendations as to how to best um plan for the funding for environmental justice and safety element implementation. But um earmarking a certain percentage of the capital fund, what what you really would be doing is earmarking a percentage of, you know, the twenty-odd funds that contribute towards capital resources. And some of those have very specific legal nexus requirements that we need to to track. And so without going through fund by fund, um it it's a hard answer to um provide um at a a very high level. So I think we need to do a little bit more homework, um sit down with our our legal team and our finance teams and and understand what our options may be. Um and we can certainly think about some ways to put together a funding strategy, a an implementation plan uh for those um efforts coming forward uh to you hopefully next month. But um the uh earmarking just a percentage from each of the funds does need a little bit more investigation before we can can give you a a really complete answer.
Thank you, Ms. Segaya, and I see an EJ fund on the horizon, possibly. Thank you. Uh Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, on environmental justice element and how to fund that work, I know over the last year, I've been a broken record on the the value of using hopefully a grant writer to help us go after funds that have Justice Forty requirements um that support uh a lot of the projects that are being proposed in the EJ element. And I I wanted to check in, I know that there has been a grant writer that's working with you all. Is there a current focus on that grant writer looking at environmental justice, climate justice-related projects? Or will there be that focus moving forward?
Yeah, we have given the grant writer an overview of most of the major areas that we're looking at in terms of work streams right now. Environmental justice, I think, will ramp up after we finalize the plan and then can move into implementation a little more. They're definitely looking at that topic as well as climate adaptation and resi- and resiliency. Um and they work directly with our sustainability and um community development staff on on those.
That's great to hear, because I I know that through the bipartisan infrastructure law as well as the Inflation Reduction Act, there are just so many funds open right now and that have been going out out the door in the last year that it would be great to see if there are any options or opportunities for our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. Um I think you mentioned, um I'm happy to hear that we're using the grant writer. I think a lot of this comes down to funding. And I do think it would be helpful at some point to have a council discussion on kind of the balance between um grant writing, um you know, generating, you know, revenue versus like the water. Like, how are we going to fund all these things in the long term? We talk a lot about um our operating budget and, you know, how we need to balance the budget every year um and how one-time money is kind of for one-time uses. So I think we're, we have to be able to kind of walk and chew bubble gum at the same time, both looking at our operating revenue, our operating stream and our structural needs. And so I just think as we move forward, I I think the council would be helpful for us to to have some discussions around that. Since it sounds like we have a lot of large needs coming up in the years ahead. And then I think, you know, the three things to get anything done are kind of like the money, the capacity, and then the political will, and then that can help prioritize things. I do have like comments on some things. Is now the appropriate time? Okay. So uh I'm always reluctant at this stage to kind of add new things or take things off, um because I know this is like a very delicate puzzle we're putting together here. One thing I'm hoping maybe isn't too much of a a lift and wouldn't bump things off, um is the bike rack um comments. Not like a a theoretical bike rack, but actual bike racks. This has been something that's been brought up um recently in some of the emails we got and also over the years, I know that um when I go visit many places in our city, um there's a lack of bike parking. And also I know in in front of Walgreens where the kids congregate, those bike racks are in a really not ideal location. So um I don't know if there's an opportunity to have like a bike rack master plan or something, but I I do feel like the bike parking situation in our city needs some attention. And I would be curious to hear what, if if we wanted to address that, what the impact and bumping would be on on other things? And is there a way to kind of flip that in? And then other than that, um you know, I'm really happy to see um lots of transportation projects continue to be on this list, especially since we have the Safe Streets priority. I'm excited um that we're kind of moving on from the the discussions around middle sidewalks aside, um and uh focusing now potentially on on Middlefield. There's a great need at Woodland and Middlefield and Willow at Middlefield and that project, so I'm happy to see that. I really want um to see that go and and get the attention it needs. Another project um that's on this list, but I'm not sure if everyone's aware of the status of this, is the Coleman Ringwood Study. So the county is leading a Coleman Ringwood project and um there may be some movement at the county on getting a pilot going on their side of the project. And then I just want to make sure that if and when that pilot takes place on the county side, that the city is also kind of ready. And that right now, the way it's listed on this list is kind of um about the study. But um you know, things could potentially move fast with the county um being ready to pilot their portion. I just want to make sure that there's nothing in here precluding from the city that the council would have needed to do at this stage, so that the city can act on doing kind of our share of any pilot that would take place. And other than that, um yeah, I I, like I said, I mostly want to just kind of go forward and 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 get this work done. And I I always worry that kind of us um tinkering from the dais just kind of creates roadblocks and and time. So I'm hoping that the only thing I've kind of thrown out there is the bike rack thing, and I'm curious if you have a reaction to that. And I see I Councilmember Nash nodding or questioning or wanting to speak, maybe? I'm not sure. Making a lot of eye contact, but you don't, I can't see your face.
I think the bike rack is, um the Complete Streets Commission is a perfect place for the bike rack and maybe coming up with proposals. Given our staff capacity at this point especially, um and perhaps and also their intimate knowledge of the city.
Yeah, I totally agree. I'm just curious um if we wanted bike rack attention sooner than later to actually happen. I agree that there might be some planning that needs to happen. Like, what would that look like in terms of this process?
So recently, we've heard, we actually a few months ago had a meeting with the um with the Youth Advisory Commission and asked them for feedback on locations. Uh they they did give us some feedback. Um we also heard last week on about Nealon Park and needing additional bike parking. So this is something that we can fold into our operations assessing. And yes, we can take this back to the Complete Streets Commission and and get um get more comprehensive feedback and develop a plan.
I have a follow-up question. Does it require less work or more work to have it referred to a commission?
It's always more work, but it's great work, yes, because we can, we uh often, it's very nice to listen to the feedback and there may be just things that we've we uh we could have missed. So we can always receive their feedback, work with them on developing a plan, and then um and report out on the installation of additional bike racks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I think that's really exciting. Um I also think it gives the public an opportunity and a forum to uh weigh in. I know like Coffee Bar, her as an example, I'm often like tethering my bike to like, I don't know if it's a tree or a pole. So if I were a member of the public and I saw it on the Complete Streets Agenda, I could then, you know, weigh in or something. But I hope it's not a multi-year process. Um and I just think it's something that's kind of, it's one of those things that kind of, it's like the gatehouse. It's just kind of like always out there, but just kind of needs the attention. Thank you. I'm excited to hear it could potentially just be rolled into operation.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you. I want to echo support for seeing bike racks, bike racks move forward in an expeditious way. And we'll defer to staff's decision about the best way to move that forward in a quick, quick, helpful way. Two, given what the uh city manager shared about Plaza Seven renovations, I think I'd like to see that move from on hold to I guess, would that be planning or the start of that process? One thing I'm curious about with other folks, uh with other folks in the dais is about stormwater work. In conversation with city staff, I wonder about the the timeline on that, given other things on your priority list. Is that something that you feel like you can meaningfully take on this year? Is that something that feels like it requires more time? And just was curious for a quick bit of feedback.
For the stormwater funding assessment, we actually um have the requests for of for proposals written, um finalized. It's just a matter of then having the staff to work with the consultant, but we are hoping to do that this fiscal year.
Okay, perfect. Then I have no comment to make on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash? So I agree with the comments that have been made. I think the staff report um and I agree with what's um going on in the staff, the staff report proposal. I actually um had heard that we wanted to wait on Plaza Seven until we got the, so I will leave it to staff, but I whether or not it makes sense to move, I think we do want to move whenever it's appropriate. But I certainly would prioritize the downtown parking lot study and getting that, um whatever we can do to move the housing projects forward.
Sorry. Thank you. I I think our general approach, in order to move forward with the downtown parking lot study, is to seek some initial feedback from the council through that study session. We think that the likely recommendation or the the likely um scenarios that we could lay out will lead to Plaza Seven being able to proceed as a a more immediate next step, but we think that study session would um be um the first first step. Can I chime in just one question based on that? Is Plaza Eight's the one by Walgreens? Okay, so my my husband's kind of like man on the street, like um he's not tapped into all this. And he's, he often gives me feedback, like, these are terrible, these parking lots are terrible. So assuming we come out of the study session and it's pretty clear that we're not going to be kind of touching those parking lots with housing, how soon will potentially repaving of those lots? Because it's like an, is it a wire out utility undergrounding project too? Just, I know a lot of members of the public have commented on the the this quality of those pavings, and I just want to give people a sense of when they might see those repaved. If if that's the council direction, not to pursue those with housing and everything.
So if we receive direction, um it is uh most likely a two-year process in terms of working through the designs, evaluating the undergrounding, much public outreach as well, assessing um maybe a different uh method of paving to make it faster or more environmentally sensitive. Incorporating green infrastructure and then um and then the uh the bidding and construction, so it would be a two, two-year process.
Is there nothing we can do now for like some of those pothole repairs, like temporary fixes?
Yes, I mean, we have uh the wet weather is never a friend to to pavement, so we um w- we have been doing some minor repairs and will continue to do so. Some are beyond what can be done, um but we'll continue to assess and have our maintenance crews repair as they can.
Thank you.
And the parking lot um renovations were actually on last year's CIP budget, and they've actually been moved on to hold because of this study. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. And I agree. I I think all of us hear and experience um the deterioration of the parking lot, um but certainly the housing is a priority, I think, again, for everyone. My concern, there was talk about grants and money and I'm, other ways to fund projects. And while I support that, my biggest concern right now is implementation of the projects where we already have grant money and just making sure with the staff that we have, that we can actually push those forward and succeed in getting those across the finish line, doing a good job using the money. So whatever we can do there is great. I'm especially thinking of the electrification, building electrification, the 4.5 million where the deadline's coming up quite quickly, although I realize that's not a capital project. And then whatever we can do, again, with the bike racks in an incremental way, if it's possible not to wait for the entire plan, but actually just, I mean, there's some obvious places where more bike racks could be provided and would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. And thank you for all the work on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I definitely support the bike racks and then also the prioritizing project implementation that we already have funding for. And I am a huge supporter of parks. So definitely do not want to delay anything that is in progress right now for parks. And then also, let's see. Did you actually want us to talk about projects to delay? Or is what we just provided enough feedback for staff?
This is great feedback. We we don't want to intentionally intentionally delay projects, but wanted your assessment in terms of, you know, things that are on hold, maybe other projects that you might prioritize over over others. So but if this is, this is great, because we are proposing something that we hope to be successful on, given the the plan to fill the vacancies.
Thank you. And do you need me to do a recap? I wrote things down, but the list is actually pretty short.
Great. Yes, that would be great.
All right, if there are no more questions or comments for staff. Did you want me to recap the list?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Okay, we have bike racks. Councilmember Willison, you brought up Willow.
Let's see, I brought up the Middlefield project, making sure, I mean, it's on the list, just like giving it a thumbs up. The Coleman project is making sure that whatever's in the CIP includes a potential pilot when the county's ready to go.
And that was it?
And then, I think that was it.
Okay. Then we had bike racks for Councilmember Dorr and then also Plaza Seven, which.
I'm amenable to to when it, when it needs to happen, moving forward.
And then also stormwater drain? No. Okay, take stormwater.
I also mentioned in the next round of this, having a list of which element or plan the different items are connected to, represented in the the files that are shared, the agenda.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification. And Councilmember Nash, it was, she's good. I'm good.
I mean, I'm also like the Middle Avenue crossings, so like, like the El Camino crossings, like, just go forth.
We're, we're happy, it sounds like.
Thank you for for the recap and the feedback. The the two other things that I had noted were to come back to you on the police radio replacement, if that was something that we needed to expedite into to one more year instead of two more years. And then we already talked about the study session on on downtown. So I think those were the the other two follow up items.
Yes, and I think the the other item was when you come back to have, to add in the chart, how it's connected to environmental justice and the safety element.
Yes, absolutely. We'll add the elements. And also, the, we can even do our other plans, include those as well.
If we're just talking about the spreadsheet for a second, can I have one? One more thing is, just looking at the district on the spreadsheet, I'm not sure how useful that is. It seems to be slightly inconsistent, because sometimes it's like citywide and sometimes it's a particular district. But sometimes it's something that says it's a particular district, but it's really citywide. And so I just think we need to give another thought of like what we're trying to accomplish by having that there. I think like if it's a particular park renovation for one, you know, but although Burgess Park's kind of a citywide park, so I'm not sure what that's giving us. But I understand why it's there, but I don't know. It's something to think about.
Is, if it's helpful for staff, I'm okay with it if it's not necessary.
But I agree, it could review and more consistency would be beneficial. And also, District One and District Three end up coming up quite a bit, because that's where the city facilities are. And yet, those are citywide benefits. So it's, I think, taking another look and see what the district, what purpose it fills. And then if if it does fill a purpose, then probably on citywide facilities rather than to have it all rather than District One or District Three.
Right. We will reassess based on the function and services.
Thank you, Mr. Gaia and Ms. Mitch, for your presentation and for all of the information you have provided the city council and the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is regular business, item E. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. Our first item is E1, introduce and waive the first reading amending our municipal code, section 2.04.160, salaries established to modify city council member compensation. Continued from our May 7 meeting, here to introduce this item is our city clerk, Judy Heron.
Thanks, Mayor Taylor. So yes, the item before the city council is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance related to city council compensation. Staff does have one update to the ordinance since the publishing of the agenda. Staff is requesting that the proposed ordinance be updated to clarify the amended and unchanged sections of chapter 2.04, as displayed on the screen. We are proposing amending sections 2.04.160, 100 and 120. And the remainder of the sections in chapter 2.04 would be unchanged. These changes will be brought before the city council at the next reading of this item. Next, I just wanted to provide a little bit of detail and maybe some clarification on the process. The proposed ordinance would modify the city council's current compensation. The city council did receive an informational item on March 12th in preparation for this item. Because this is an ordinance, there is a two-step process, the first being a first reading and an introduction, which you are hearing tonight. And this can be done at a regular or a special city council meeting. The second step is the second reading and adoption, which must be heard at a regular city council meeting. I would also like to note that any change in city council compensation would be applicable to the seated members of the city council after the November 2024 election. And with that, I conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any clarifying questions or open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any clarifying questions from city council members? Ms. Heron, can you please take public comment on this side?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item E1, introduce and waive the first reading amending municipal code, section 2.04.160, salaries established to modify city council compensation. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If participating in person, complete a speaker card at the back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item E1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Bringing it back to the dais. Are there questions or comments from staff, from city council members? Councilmember Dorr?
Yes, thank you. I am glad to see this, as council stipends are an important way to help cover costs for those who are serving in this role, whether that be cost for babysitters or transportation, or the material cost of printing out extra flyers and handing things out, the the cost of serving the community in this way on council. And of course, I want to acknowledge that stipends, even with the with the upgrade, of course, is not enough to replace lost income. So it's, it doesn't mean that, it's the only way to help make councils a more diverse and representative of communities. But I think it is an important factor to to help ensure there is recognition and some help to cover costs of of serving. But of course, that there are, there are a lot of other ways to help increase representative leadership and diverse leadership on councils, which is one of the reasons why I was excited about seeing this. And so just want to acknowledge that this is not the only way to to help increase diversity and representativeness on our councils and that there are a lot of other things that also can be done to help folks from different backgrounds and experiences serve in this role. I personally am so grateful that I I have a very flexible job that allows me to to take time out of my day to have meetings while also serving. And so, but I'd like it to be more accessible for folks that have hourly paid, really strict, strict rules on when they can spend time, would would like it to be accessible for other folks too. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilmember Willison.
Thank you. I think I agreed with everything that Councilmember Dorr said. I typed in something to Google about inflation. I think I said like $150 in 1965, what would it be in today's dollars? And I think it was like $1,487. I don't think any of us do this job to get rich. And so I think this is just something that is long overdue. You know, I've already announced I'm not running again, so I won't be a beneficiary of this. I think this is just trying to make this better for those who follow us. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Willison. And if there are no other city council member comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Dorr and a second by City Councilmember Willison to introduce and waive the first reading amending municipal code, section 2.04.160, salaries established to modify city council compensation and amending sections 2.04.00 and 2.04.120 to replace mayor pro tempore with vice mayor. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, we will be doing roll call vote with one council member absent. So our first one is City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
City Councilmember Willison?
Yes.
City Councilmember Dorr?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, we will take a seven-minute break.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Our next item is our study session, item F. Study sessions are an opportunity for city council, for city staff, to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the city council in the near future. City staff will provide a presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the city council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The city council will not take action on items addressed in study sessions. The city council may provide direction to city staff for preparation for additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the city council for action. The study session item is provide direction on updating the city council procedure manual, continued from our May 7 city council meeting. Here to introduce this item is our city clerk Judy Heron. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So yes, the item before you currently is to provide direction on the city council's procedures manual. This study session is an opportunity for the city council to provide direction on the proposed edits made to the city council manual. Specifically, staff is seeking input and edits made to the following sections: placing an item on the agenda, public comment, voting procedures, city manager and city council member reports, proclamations and certificates of recognition, and updates and removals of various chapters and sections of the manual. The staff report provides greater detail on the background of the city council's procedures manual. It was created in 2006 and amended throughout 2007 through 2018. In 2019, the city council established an ad hoc subcommittee to work with staff and review current city council procedures and recommend updates. In March of 2020, the city council disbanded that ad hoc subcommittee. From 2020 to 2021, staff returned to the city council with new and updated individual procedures. Staff is now recommending repealing individual policies and procedures that are related to governance and incorporating revised content into a manual. First, staff is seeking city council input and consensus around proposed updates on placing an item on the agenda, which is attachment S to the staff report. These updates include addressing discrepancies between the current 2018 procedures manual and the individual adopted procedures. It also incorporates city council direction that was received from goal setting. Secondly, staff is seeking input and consensus around proposed public comment, which is page eight of attachment Z in the staff report. These updates include the inclusion of virtual public comment and removes the requirement of speakers providing their name and residence, removal of reference to time donation, as this can be done by the mayor's discretion, and visual requests requiring coordination with the city clerk before a city council meeting for videos, PowerPoint presentations, or similar displays. Third, we are seeking consensus and input around the proposed updates to the voting procedures. This is attachment T to the staff report. Updates include roll call voting when one or more city council member is participating remotely, which is required per Roberts Rules of Order. And staff is suggesting that the city council annually determine the order of that roll call vote. There's additional language around a tie vote during an appeal. And the reconsideration language was updated to simplify the more lengthy Roberts Rules of Order process. Here, we are seeking input and consensus around city manager and city council member reports, which is attachment U to the staff report. These updates include creating one agenda item for both city manager and city council member reports, removing language around placing an item on the agenda, which currently contradicts the current manual as well as the proposed procedure, and also incorporating direction from the goal setting about a city council member report out form. Five, staff is seeking input and consensus around the proposed updates to proclamations and certificates of recognition, attachment B to the staff report. These updates include adding certificates of recognition to this section, defined request guidelines, and define issuance of proclamations and certificates. Lastly, staff is seeking input and consensus around the updates and removal of various sections of the manual, which are attachments W through AA in the staff report. These updates include removal of portions governed by state law and the municipal code, remove and update portions that are historical overview, are not a procedure or a policy, and/or recommend to be added to new documents such as city manager policies or a city council member orientation document. There are also minor updates that do not significantly alter the substance or meaning of the content. As an example, updating the term mayor pro tempore to vice mayor, fixing any typos and updating terminology. Lastly, add sections related to appointments, subcommittees, remote appearance, annual recess, and required trainings. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any clarifying questions or open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any clarifying questions from the city council before we go to public comment? Councilmember Willison?
Thank you, city clerk Heron. I just was looking at the form for the report outs and just had a couple questions. So is the way you're envisioning it that a council member would complete this form? And then would that information be published somewhere? Or would the city council member be verbally giving that during the meeting like we kind of do now? And then my second question is sometimes a city council member might want to report something or bring something up about their office hours or something that doesn't fall under an agency. Would that use this form as well, or how do you envision that? Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Willison. So for the second question, yes, I think that even if it is an update of office hours or attending a non-agency event, that the form could still be used. It would be ideal for myself, the city clerk, to receive the form ahead of time, so that way it can be published in the agenda. So that way, the city council member can then choose whether they want to verbalize the report out as well as having it attached, or just having the attachment. It's not a requirement to complete the form at this time to provide a report out, but it would be encouraged.
Thank you. So that would be listed under the agenda? Would there be a staff report showing all the council members' report outs?
It would probably just be the attachment. It would just be the form, and it would come under the city council member report item.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Willison. And if there are no more questions at this moment, we will go ahead and take public comment. Ms. Heron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item F1, provide direction on updating the city council procedure manual, participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine. Participating in person, you can complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. And this will be the final call for public comment on item F1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And we'll bring it back to the dais and hear public, hear councilmember discussion.
Would you like us to go item by item or give all of our feedback on all of the items?
Honestly, I think give all of the feedback on all the items.
Okay.
Or you don't? You want item? Okay, we'll do item by item.
Okay. Then I can give feedback on placing an item on the agenda? Is that the first one?
Yes.
Okay. So I, for some reason, thought about this a lot. And I think this needs to be simplified. I think at the end of the day, the main question is whether or not the council wants to bring this item for a discussion. And if so, what level of staff involvement there needs to be ahead of it coming to council? So sometimes, I can't remember, what was the item that we discussed recently without a staff report? We recently, city manager Murphy, do you remember what that item was?
Through the mayor? Yes, so I'm, I'm recalling one item that still had a staff report, but it was a minimal staff report regarding community events. It kind of attached some previous staff reports and just provided a little bit of framework, but didn't have any additional analysis.
So sometimes the council just wants to discuss something. And so I would say, I think it's, the way it's written now, a lot of those options are kind of the same, but slightly different. But I think the real question as a decision maker, trying to decide whether or not I want to like veer, be part of veering the city towards a new topic, is is this something we're just discussing once? Or is this something that the city, like on our own? Or is this something that we are asking staff to do a bunch of research and that could bump a bunch of stuff other than city council management, the meetings? So for me, it's almost like, do we want to devote any council time to this? And then if so, how much staff time ahead of it do we want there to be? So it could be like low, medium, high. So in the example of the meeting, I guess, that we had on community events, I'd be like, okay, someone says they want to discuss community events. Let's get to it when, if there's a majority that wants to touch it, then is this something that's going to involve just a conversation among ourselves? Is it something that's going to involve a lot of research and shifting of priorities for staff? And then that will help me inform whether or not I would support it coming back. I just, the way it's written now, I find it, I find it confusing. And maybe I'm not being clear. I'm trying to simplify it, but maybe I'm not simplifying it. Anyway, I just think that there's got to be a better way of doing this, and maybe I'm not sure what that is. I'm curious to hear your thoughts.
I'm happy to try that a first response. I think where we may run into a little bit of an issue is having the city council discuss an item that's not on an agenda, even in the broadest of terms, whether it's a low, high, or medium priority. The way the proposed procedure is it allows staff to agendize an item with a staff report that is very minimal on staff's time, and then allows the city council to at least have that discussion. So maybe the outcome of that isn't, you know, direct the city manager, direct the item. Maybe those steps are altered. But I think actually getting the item agendized is very important, even to have that very high-level discussion.
That's an excellent point. So maybe it's, it's still those four choices right now to me are very confusing. So maybe it's just like a yes, no of whether you even want this to come back. And then when it comes back, then, then it's just a low, medium, high. You're making, I can't read you, councilmember Nash.
So I guess I'm, would like clarification on, my understanding was this was to how to place it on the agenda? And I actually liked the approach that staff had where there'd actually just be a form? And?
No, I like the form.
Okay, so you're talking about the next step, once it comes back to council?
So I guess, so it goes on a form, the person wanting the item. So let's say I want to have ice cream giveaway every Tuesday in the city or something. So I, I want to agendize that idea. So I fill out the form, and then it comes to council. And then the council can decide, there needs to be three votes to say this is an idea worth pursuing and even talking about. And so I don't get the support for that because people feel like we don't have the resources or the time, or it's just not a priority. Or I get the support for it, then it comes back. So it gets on an agenda. So it gets on an agenda, and then, and then the question is, do we want to, I guess? Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, I guess it's the, so the four options here are for the second stage? Okay, maybe I'm getting myself confused. I guess I'm still confused about these seconds, like referring it, because ones like tackle it right away, tackle it whenever you can get to it, tackle it at goal setting, which I feel like isn't really a thing because we have basically established that goal setting isn't for kind of one-off projects. Or the fourth is refer it to a commission, which seems weird too. These just seem like weird directions to go. And I don't have an exact answer, but it seems like overly complicated is what I'm getting at. And I guess I'm just, I'm trying to have a discussion with you guys on how we can streamline this and make this less confusing because honestly, I find this very confusing.
I was looking at this as how to get it on the agenda meeting. Initially, someone has an idea they want to agendize, and they fill out a form. I would think that they'd send it to the city manager and perhaps to the city clerk and to the mayor. It gets emailed, and then it goes onto an agenda for council discussion. And then, once it's on an agenda and it's in front of the council, that's when you're talking about it.
But I don't think it goes on the agenda until there's at least three people that want to talk about it.
I was seeing this as it goes on, maybe we need a clarification. I was seeing this as it goes on the agenda under council member requests.
Correct. Yeah, without a vote or consensus, the form could be submitted. It would go under city council initiated items for that city council discussion, and if there's votes.
Then we can actually have a discussion about how many resources?
Correct.
So Mayor Taylor, if I could just jump in?
Yes, please.
So just to clarify, the way that the language is drafted now, the form, the request form would automatically appear under the county, city council initiated item. So it would automatically go on an agenda. And that agenda item is sort of narrow. It would be, does the council want to do something more with this request as a future agenda item? And so those different options are the options that the council has in terms of directing a few, you know, future action on the item itself. Of course, council can edit this proposed language from staff to make it more streamlined, but I think the idea is to give the council a clear understanding of all of the steps that can be taken after the item has been presented as a potential future agenda item.
I understand this part for placing an item on the agenda, but I hear the concern about, okay, it's on an agenda, we're discussing it. Where is the manual section that says the next step of these four options? Is that repeated somewhere in this manual? And are these the right four things to say? And I myself, when I tried to put the agenda item on, was it bringing back ALPRs or one of the other conversations? It was confusing because we were saying, yes, share, share something back, a very informal staff report. But, but trying to, I hear what council member Willison is saying about how much work are we asking? And if there was a way to, to make it clear how soon we want it back?
Yeah, I think two things. One is the staff effort involved, and two is the timing. So like, if, if someone fills out a form and they get their item to go under city council initiated items, and then the council then says yay or nay, we're gonna, we want to do something. Let's say we want to go forward with this. Then I think the real question is, well, how much staff effort do they want to go into this, like leading up to the real discussion about it? And when do they want to have this discussion? Because I think that's what these four options are getting at, but I just don't think these four paths are the cleanest way of moving that forward. Unfortunately, I don't have the solution. I just know what the confusion is.
City Clerk Herron, do you have a suggestion?
So looking at the four proposed actions for a city council initiated item, staff could return with maybe something more along the lines, but has been discussed up at the dais today. But I don't have any quick solutions at the moment.
What, one suggestion I would make Mayor Taylor, if I may, is, I mean, it can be as simple as, you know, after a discussion with a motion, a second, the city council may take action in providing direction to staff. So, I mean, it can be whatever the council wants to direct staff to do at that moment. So, and action could include, or direction could include, you know, time requirements for preparation of the staff report, you know, recommendations on submission to an advisory body, or deferring the action to the city council's annual goal-setting process.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltze.
So the first and third bullets are trying to get at timeline and staff resources as well. So I think if we added, especially with the first bullet, that is a more immediate action. So we might be able to add a little more text there around kind of the low, medium, high expectations of what goes into preparing a follow-up item. The third bullet is really, you know, as resources are available, so it's pushing it out. It's more of a discussion between the council and the city manager of where that would fit in with our overall priorities and agenda management. But maybe we could work in some extra language on staff effort.
Councilmember Willison.
So Assistant City Attorney Bazano, is it? Hi, thank you. So it's on a city council initiated agenda. So it's under city council initiated items. Then at that time, is the city council allowed to talk? Is that when the city council would have, under the scenario that you have? Because I'm starting to kind of like it. Because each item is kind of unique in and of itself, and we kind of need, need information about how much the staff thinks that it would take, and then how it ranks up vis-à-vis the other priorities, like what gets bumped, which is different depending on which department it might fall under. So are we allowed to have that type of unique conversation around the time requirements, whether it goes to an advisory body, whether it's going to have a robust staff report and have this kind of an interaction with the city manager and potentially a department head? Does that, is that discussion allowable under just that form being submitted?
Yes, so you could have that initial discussion, asking these preliminary questions about timing, staffing needs, et cetera. At a very high level, you wouldn't be able to go into the details and discuss the underlying topic itself, but you would be able to talk about, well, I mean, if we, if we do this, how much time do we want staff to dedicate to preparing, you know, the staff report, analyzing the issue, conducting the preliminary review, et cetera? That could definitely occur. But ultimately, this is sort of like, I mean, the way to view it is a, is a two-step process. The first step is this request form and this initial discussion on whether or not you're going to agendize it. And then the second step is actually having that agenda discussion.
Is, can we attach a time limit on the discussion after we, after the request form is submitted?
At that initial discussion by the council?
Yes. Ten minutes.
Yeah, I mean, you could, yes, this is a policy decision. The council can make that decision, certainly. It's, it, you could also include, the, the council member making the request could also include in their request form what they envision the steps might be that staff needs to take. You know, in some jurisdictions where they use this two-step process, the council member will say in his request form, you know, I want a very minimal staff report. I only want, you know, this item to be a very cursory discussion about X, Y, Z, so that when the council considers that form, they know, okay, this council member really just wants to talk about a basic issue. He doesn't want a lot of staff time dedicated to it, so I can support that.
Ms., oh, may I? Okay. Ms. Bazano, so you mentioned other cities. Have you seen something that's like, potentially we could consider a best practice in this area?
Well, I, in San Mateo County, Foster City, I know uses this, a similar process to this, that's being proposed.
Of these four bullets here, or of having just like a high-level discussion with staff?
Just having a high level. So they, they don't really have these bullet points, as I recall offhand. I don't believe they have these bullet points. They just have, you know, the discussion part, and then, of course, they can provide direction to staff depending on what the council, what a majority of the council wants to do with that, that suggested item.
Councilmember Dorr.
Maybe it would be helpful then, in the language here and in the other section where it talks about the discussion that follows after you place it on the, on the agenda, the broader language that our assistant city, city attorney proposed, and then, for example, and then these four bullets, would that better represent the, the direction that you're potentially proposing here of have it open, but then have a direction that folks could go when they are trying to propose an action?
I was liking the more, like, examples being considerations, like the time, staff effort, like the urgency, the staff effort, the, the whether it's going to an advisory body, whatnot. Then these four bullets have always been confusing to me. Sorry. But I'm curious what my colleagues have to say. I'm also curious what the city manager's office has to say.
I'm actually supportive of using time and staffing as the criteria for determining adding something to the agenda for a city, a city council member request. I support having the form and then the two-step process that the assistant city attorney referenced. And, I don't know, Councilmember Nash, and I didn't know if the city manager or assistant city manager had a comment.
Yes, I do at the appropriate time. I do see, Councilmember Nash seems interested in speaking though.
So I don't see the difference between what we're discussing and what we currently have, other than how you requested to actually get on the agenda for this discussion. And I actually would say that I think that what we've been doing works fine, and that we have, it, it feels to me like we have had a lot of discussion around the topics and come up with one of these four items or some variation that staff has provided the input as far as balancing resources and how much effort. And so I'm, would love more information about why we should change it.
So I just find these four items just, they're confusing to me. I don't know how better to articulate it. I, I, for me, what the determining factors of whether I'm going to support an item is, might not even be the time that staff puts in or the, the resources, but like whether it's in line with our priorities, if it's going to derail us. So there's a lot of other calculations, but to help make that decision, like if it's a little thing. I, I don't mean to make a thing of this, and I know we're spending a lot of time on this. So if, if the rest of the council wants to stick with this, I'm fine with it. I just personally find this a little confusing. I, I love the idea of the form. I love the idea of that streamlining how it's going to get on the agenda. I just find these four pathways, I don't know if it's that they're not mutually exclusive, there's just something about them that has always.
But don't you think we've gotten there with the discussion?
But I don't think that aligns then with what these four bullets, if we're having a discussion, then, then. But again, this is, I'm, I defer to, if you feel like we've already flushed this out, then I'm happy to leave it.
Just wanted to follow up with the city manager.
Yes, thank you. So I would, I would say that based off tonight's discussion, there is the opportunity to do some refinements to this that I think distills a lot of what we're hearing this evening. So I do think it would be productive, constructive to kind of distill the essence of those four items into considerations, the way that's written right now. It makes it seem like you can only choose one of those four things. I think we can kind of strike that balance. I think it's clear it's a two-step process. There's going to be a form. So I think the main thing that would be helpful for me to hear this evening from the council is whether or not you would like the form to include some of those questions and considerations for a council member to complete. And frankly, it varies by council member. Some council members may want to answer the four additional questions, some council members may not, but at least I think having whatever those considerations are in the form would be helpful. So I think, again, this is a study session. This needs to come back to the council. I think there's the draft form that was shown in the presentation. We can flesh out that, that form some more to include those additional considerations. We can provide the sample staff reports of what had been done most recently. I do think there's the ability to refine this a little bit.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Councilmember.
City Manager Murphy, I believe that the form was for the, the city council member report out, not for the.
Yes, sorry, I apologize, but the same concept of the form, like that.
I think there could be an area on the form that said something like to the filler out, to the council member filling this out, like what do you, what information can you provide about what, how you envision it, or however that was saying? Thoughts might include amount of staff time, when you feel like this needs to be taken up, things like that. But I'd love the idea of you guys thinking more.
Councilmember Dorr.
I'm supportive of the form. I think this is helpful. I will say, as the newest council member, I was really confused earlier this year when I was trying to put something on the agenda for the first time about these options. So appreciate the option of spending a little bit more time to clarify, these are some of the options, and clarifying also the, the description of some of these. Number one is highest priority and takes the most amount of time, and kind of explaining that out here, just so maybe the newer people who are sitting on these, on the dais can have that context as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash. So it, it is permissible for whoever's making the request to put this on, on the agenda, could attach a letter to the form or provide the information? Because I think the more context can be provided to the council ahead of time, will make for a better discussion.
Which is what the form would do? Because there'd be spots in the form where you could fill that out and provide that context, I believe.
And, and the form would have to be submitted by Wednesday before the council meeting, or not the day before, the day of?
Correct. It needs to be submitted with enough time to attach it to the agenda.
Yeah, two business days before the publication of the agenda, which is, would be Tuesday because we publish Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Willison.
Yeah, I would just ask that the, an example is put in there because two business days always confuses me. Two business days before the publication. So like, put in there, for example, if a council meeting is on a Tuesday, the publication is on a Thursday, therefore, two days before is the Tuesday before, something like that. So a new council member can look at, or a member of the public can know. Yeah.
It'll be a part of the new council member orientation. Right, that was the first item. Now, item number two.
If I could pause the city council just one moment, I just want to make sure that I've received all of the feedback. We are looking to proceed with a form, adding to that form what the city council member kind of wants to see from this item. Perhaps the ability to add an attachment to the form? Was there discussion around adding to the form if this is a city council current goal or priority?
Okay.
I am seeing nods, all right. And then, kind of returning to these four bullets, what I gathered from the discussion is maybe adding time impacts or staff efforts, the, even the level of urgency maybe to the bullets? Just kind of cleaning those up based on just some of the discussion that was up on the dais, but keeping them, like keeping the four?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding was staff was going to take another look at it?
Yeah.
And provide a new record. And provide a new recommendation, an updated recommendation?
At the four bullets, correct? Yes. I'm seeing three nods. Alright, and so with that, was there any further direction on placing an item on the agenda? Great, okay, thank you so much. If the city council would like to move on to attachment T, which is voting procedures, we can do that?
Yes, please, thank you. Public comment is the next item, I believe.
Thank you. Let me bring that item up. So that would be attachment Z, page eight. Thank you for your patience. It's coming up. Okay, and as mentioned, the proposed changes is the inclusion of virtual public comment, removing the requirement of speakers providing their name and residence, removal of time donation, and requiring coordination with the city clerk for visual requests. No, go ahead, turn that back to the dais.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Is there any discussion on this item? Are we comfortable with the staff's recommendations?
I'm curious about the helpful flexibility of if there are many, many people reducing down to two minutes. And so that's a curiosity I have for others in the dais. If there's a desire or a value in keeping something that creates that optionality.
Councilmember Wilson.
I think that, so I've been both a member of the public for many years and a council member. So I have multiple perspectives on how long it feels to make public comment and what those public comments, how they land. I think that one of the most important things with public comment is certainty of knowing how long you have. And so I think it is challenging. I think we've been playing around with this, you know, depending on how many speakers there are thing. I'm going to throw something out there, would be like a two-minute standard public comment, but allow up to the three donating time. Because I don't think donating time happens that often. So if people feel strongly enough, like to dedicate six minutes to that, to me is fine. But I hear what people are saying, that they want to share a lot. People can always email in to ccin, city.council@menloepark.gov ahead of time. They can reach us lots of different ways. But I think that the council does have a lot of important business to discuss. And usually, I think two minutes can be sufficient. So that's what I would propose.
And would the maximum time donated would be up to six minutes?
I'm supportive. Is this for just general public comment or any public comment? And I would think it would be for any public comment.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorr.
I'm also wondering for folks who maybe don't have public speaking experience, if two minutes will feel intimidating and rushed for folks? Not to complicate it, but I do want to just raise that that's a concern I have about moving to two minutes. But I hear, I completely agree with the importance of also having certainty in knowing how much time you have in advance as you're preparing your comments. I think because this is the one, there's the public comment at the beginning and the public comment throughout. I would be a little bit more inclined to three minutes per person to ensure that folks, you know, who are not able to be succinct can still have enough space to get out their ideas. But another alternative is also, we say two minutes and then we, the city clerk allows up to three, depending on if they can make their comment, as we already do, as the city clerk already does. So I'm curious for other thoughts.
Is there any thought about having, if we left it at three minutes, but had an open public comment period in the beginning of the meeting and potentially in the middle of the meeting? So public comment would be, say, six to 6:30. So having an established time. I'm just thinking about, this is something that we've all been actually helping, and that is getting our meetings completed by 10:30 as opposed to, I've sat in this dais until 1:30 in the morning before. So I want to see the public have access to public comment, but I also want to see a discussion with the council in regular business for the city to move forward. So how do you do that with a five-and-a-half-hour meeting? So that's what I'm thinking about, which is why for city council member requests, it is put a time limit on it. So just start putting timelines on things and doing it through a lens of fairness. So that's what I'm interested in. So is that two minutes or three minutes?
Just clarifying your proposal of the half-hour of public comment time. So would that mean to certain folks that if there's like 20 public comments, and let's say it's two minutes, does that mean only, why can't I do them? 15 people, only 15 of the 20 people make their public comment in that first half-hour? And then the other five make it later? Or they, or all of them are heard? Or how are you envisioning that?
In a situation like that, all would be heard under the two minutes, because it's only extending it by 10 minutes. Just trying to figure out a way how to be fair and not have an eight-hour council meeting. And I don't have the perfect answer to it. I just figure we have flexibility based on how many people show up to our council meetings, whether they're in person or on Zoom. Councilmember Nash, you have any thoughts?
So I like two minutes, just having a consistent two minutes for public comment for the same reasons Councilmember Wilson articulated. I would like to, I, Mr. Blowie raised the idea of having a public comment in the beginning and public comment on the end. I actually think I could support that idea. I think that that's a good idea, or what you were talking about where there's one in the middle, perhaps. But I don't know that I'd like to see a time limit on them. I certainly understand it, and perhaps if, I guess I would just be concerned that that might inhibit public discussion if there is that much discussion about an item.
So having two public comment periods at two minutes each?
Speakers could have two, would have two minutes. I would support the three extensions, the three donations, thank you. And having two public comment times, although I'd certainly want to hear from staff how, what they have. It sounds like that was a practice previously. But I guess I would say that people could only speak once. So if you spoke in the beginning, you cannot, you would not be, you could speak at any of the, on any of the topics, but you could only speak in general public comment once.
And that would be governed by the Brown Act? Because general public comment is one agenda item, even if it is split, it would just be reopen if we did it a second time? It's my understanding, City Manager, was there previously a second comment period? And if so, why was it removed?
Let's see, through the mayor? Yes, there was indeed two separate public comment periods. The reason why it was removed, I'd do a call, so I'd have to research that.
I'd be curious if there might be a reason for that of maybe if the meetings are going till 10:30 and then they're being opened for public comment, folks might not be coming. And so was it just a holdover that no one was actually using? So why was it kept? I'm curious to know what that reasoning might be. And I'd want to know that reasoning before supporting a second comment period. I think it's very helpful that there's one very known time at the beginning of the meeting where comments are taken. On the idea of holding time, it makes me wonder of, do any other cities have a, okay, public comment will be a max an hour at the beginning of a meeting? And if it goes beyond that, it'll continue at the next meeting? Or it can continue on at a later, later time during that same meeting? Because I know that here in the table, it shows cities, or in the agenda, it shows cities that have different time limits, but not about how long public comment period on the whole goes.
And then, and also some cities do not allow for donated time. Councilmember Wilson. City Attorney, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Sorry, I just wanted to chime in because I do, I am aware of a few cities that do, for controversial items or items where they know there are going to be significant public comments, they will, the mayor, as the chair of the meeting, will set a maximum time limitation on public comments. Like we will receive 30 minutes of public comments. Every speaker gets one minute each. And then at the end of the 30 minutes, the public comment period shall be over. But usually it is, most cities typically use a three-minute general public comment period. And then they'll, of course, reserve in their policies the chair or the council's discretion to adjust that time limit either by speaker and/or a maximum time limit on public comments for those meetings where there are going to be a lot of speakers. And you need that flexibility to get through the meeting and to finish your business.
Really appreciate that flexibility. Thank you for sharing that experience. I would love to see that kind of language reflected here of flexibility that the mayor has. Okay, and to limit, okay, it says here, therefore, the other side is reciting the whole audience and impose time limits per speaker. Okay, it's saying that, but I wonder if we could also say time limits per speaker and an overall time limit on how long the comment period goes? If that's another avenue that would be helpful for the city, for the mayor to possibly help make sure there's time for public comment, but also time for business?
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we still have, this is general public comment we're talking about. We still have public comment on each item that's on the agenda. So I don't, are we doing both together, Ms. Heron? Are we doing both?
Yeah, this is related to public comment across the board for general public comment as well as items on the agenda, aside from maybe the discussion about a certain time restriction on general public comment.
Okay.
Which would be, you know, say 30 minutes, you know, at the start of the meeting, 30 minutes mid-meeting for general public comment.
But what I'm saying is more of what the Assistant City Attorney is saying is that if there is a controversial item on the agenda, even saying, okay, we see everyone who wants to comment will give 30 minutes or 50 minutes.
Just open to that discretion, understood?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash.
If we were to, I guess I am interested in sticking to two minutes. I think that having a consistent time is very beneficial for the speakers to be able to plan rather than have their speaking time reduced, which is very hard to scramble when you're in the audience and all of a sudden you're trying to repackage your comments. So I feel, I would like to keep the two minutes. I am concerned about having a time limit, although I understand. So perhaps we could, if we have a controversial item, we could actually say in the agenda that we will hold one hour or 30 minutes or whatever of public comment and actually just pre-announce it and therefore.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor Taylor. I think I'm very much in alignment with Councilmember Nash on this. I would, I think, you know, it's kind of like that work-life balance. It's a fantasy. Like how are we going to balance making sure everyone gets to express themselves as much as they want? And our desire and need to wrap up our meetings while our brains are still functioning at a high level? We're never going to strike that perfect balance. And so I think what we're trying to do here is an impossible task. So again, I think based on the experience I've had in these chambers many years, I think it's appropriate to have two minutes of general public comment. I like Councilmember Nash's idea of pre-announcing for items where we think we're going to have a lot of people or something at the top that says items that draw like large crowds, you know, maybe limited to a certain speaking time or whatever. And then I think the one time for public comment is sufficient. Remember, this is general public comment, and folks have other avenues to express their opinions. And then making someone stick around to the very end of the meeting. And again, the mayor has discretion to reopen public comment at any time. So as long as we have these safeguards of mayoral discretion, I think we're fine. But setting a standard that it's going to be two minutes, it's going to be at the beginning of the meeting, and that when huge crowds come, you know, there may be a limiting, but that should be few and far between times.
And perhaps, we typically know which item, agenda items, will attract the big crowds. So perhaps we can even, as part of the agenda item, say that in this case, there will be some, you know, if we are going to, if we want to impose a time limit, I would suggest it's actually published with the agenda item.
So sometimes we know and sometimes we don't know. So like, for example, I believe we're having a study session on the Parkline project next week, which is the SRI redevelopment. I know there's been a lot of chatter on Nextdoor about it and a lot of interested parties. I have no idea how many people are going to come to council chambers. It could, to talk or to dial in, it could be five people, it could be 30 people. So I think it's sometimes impossible to tell. So I'm, again, I don't know if we're ever going to find the perfect process for this. But as long as there's that discretion that the mayor has and that it's upfront, you know, that we do our best. These are all, you know, policy decisions, so we can change our mind kind of at any time. But yeah, I think we're trying to give the public advance notice of what's going on.
I'm aligned with everything that Councilmember Wilson shared, except the two minutes. I still am thinking that three minutes would be helpful for folks, depending on their, you know, to give them the space to share if they need more time.
City Clerk Erin. What are your thoughts? Two minutes or three minutes? I mean, you're the receiver of public comment. You listen to it.
I will only point out on page four of the staff report on that public comment poll, it does list the cities who have three minutes, who have two minutes, and then the one city that is based on the number of speakers. So for like the city of San Mateo, which is based on number of speakers, if there's 10 or more speakers, I believe it goes down to two minutes. If there's over 10 speakers, it goes down to one minute per speaker. I believe they start off at three minutes. But then, I can show it on the screen.
And that's similar to what we do now.
That is similar to a process that we have been using when we have 10 or more speakers, yes.
Through the mayor. You make, you make a good point about that's what we do now. We don't proactively advertise that, though. It's at the beginning of each meeting. So that may be something that's considered as if, if you did want to continue that, that we're at least like advertising that to people ahead of time. Because for new people that come, that's maybe a little bit of a surprise for them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nash.
And I would actually recommend that if we know, like for Parkline. And I would actually recommend that if we know, like for Parkline, maybe we actually start for this next week, saying there will be a two-minute time limit for this item, for this one item, and see how it goes.
So since this is a, a study session, session, and Vice Mayor Combs is not here, I'm, I'm interested in keeping some flexibility. And so since we know that Parkline, I agree with councilmember Nash, we know that we are likely to have quite a few speakers. Let's try it for our next meeting where it is a two-minute limit for that one time. For the, for the one item.
Yeah, that's something we can add to, like, the public notice section of the staff report as well as the agenda title on the agenda.
So then we can do it for everything. Does that work?
Are we running a test next time on this? Or what's the? What's our goal? I guess at some point, we have to give the, the staff direction on what we want to do with this procedure manual. So are we going to have them see what happens next week with two minutes on every item? And then, and then have it come back and then give them direction? Just trying to decide what.
Yes. So it'll be two minutes for each item next week. And this is a pilot to see how well it works. We did get a few public comments on, in our email. One was requesting that we keep it at three minutes. And based on our last meeting, where we had it at two minutes, I, I think it went well. But it might change depending on the topic.
So if we keep it at three minutes, what about time donation? I mean, I would say if we keep it at three minutes, then no time donation. Someone can always have, you know, pass their card to this person and have them stand up, but.
Well, it sounds like this is coming back to us anyway.
It's coming back. And actually, six minutes is, maybe we have one, I mean, you're allowed to do one other time donation, so you have a total of six minutes. But it's coming back, yes.
I'm just curious, assistant city attorney, how, you mentioned in one of the comments you said earlier, that I heard you say three minutes. And the, the table that we have is just showing cities in San Mateo County. Do you work with cities in other counties? And if so, is there a standard you see for one amount of time?
It's, it's typically three minutes. In most of the other counties that I work in, in most, I think all the jurisdictions I've ever worked in, it's three minutes is the typical timeframe, unless, like I said, there's some controversial item or there's a lot of public speakers that are going to provide comments. So the, the chair will reduce the time for that particular item.
Thank you.
Or even better, public comment.
Understood.
If I could just add one more thing about the donation of time. I understand that it can be helpful to speakers, but I also think that there's nothing that prohibits the chair from giving somebody extra time if they need it because of a disability. And of course, the Brown Act requires that people that are having a, using a translator to translate their public comments get double time. So, but from a staff perspective, keeping track of who's donating time and how much time they have that's been donated, et cetera, is, is difficult. And sometimes unnecessarily creates complexity where there, there doesn't really need to be. But that's just my thought on that.
Thank you.
The agenda, a, a, amended choice that sounds the most appealing to me would be saying three minutes if under 10 speakers on an item, no donation of time. And if there's more than 10 speakers, two minutes. And have that written out, that's what we've been doing anyways, but have that written out to make that very clear for folks, that that would be the process we use.
If we went that, in that direction, I would be supportive of, with three minutes, only one person can donate time, having a limit. Or no donation? No donation. Three minutes with no donation, that, that works for everyone. Okay.
And just for clarity, we were speaking about three minutes per speaker unless there were 10 or more speakers. Was that correct? And then if there's 10 or more, two minutes per speaker?
Yes.
With the two-minute time limit, is there still no donation of time? Or are we considering a donation for a two-minute speaker? I really want to confuse everyone now.
I see three heads saying no donation of time. Or two and a half is. We're just going to keep making this complicated. I just think consistency for the speakers so they know upfront what to expect is really, really helpful. I don't have a problem with someone with two minutes having donated time from one person. But if we're not going to have donated time for a person with three minutes, then it's not consistent.
So, so the staff recommendation, where we started was three minutes and no donated time, right? So we've kind of gone full circle here. So I'm fine with the staff recommendation and just. I guess if there's 10 people. I guess the mayor has the discretion to limit time if, if necessary. It's, again, it's never going to be perfect. Someone's going to be caught off guard who had a lovely three-minute comment and they're going to have to, to modify it. There's no perfect solution here.
But if that's the standard that we use of, oh, if there's a lot of people, we will shorten it. It seems like it might be helpful to be upfront and clear in the, in the manual that that's something that we'll do.
And, and we actually say that at every council meeting. It's just not policy right now.
We do have it in the manual, but of course, pre-redline. There is a brief public comment announcement at the end of every agenda, but it does not define the public comment times. It just explains that public comment is accepted on such and such items for a regular meeting and for a special meeting. That's at the bottom of all of our agendas. But again, it doesn't spell out, you have three minutes, but this amount donated. And if there's this many speakers, so it doesn't get into those details.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. I am supportive of the staff recommendation.
Was that longer than a three-minute conversation? Okay.
I, I apologize because I truly do not want to spend, spend more time on this right this second. But I know, I, I appreciate the referral back to the staff recommendation. But I, I do think it's important to kind of reconcile with our practice. So if there is a desire to continue that statement that's in the, the mayor's notes at, at every meeting, I think that that should be reflected ultimately. Again, with allowing the mayor to have flexibility on a case-by-case basis at the meeting. But if it's.
And I may also add, thank you, city manager Murphy, that retaining the three minutes per speaker, removing the donation of time, but maybe then just adding that 10 or more speakers, that it would be two minutes. But of course, also leaving that the mayor has discretion over that. If we put that in the policy, it's memorialized, it's in the mayor's notes at the beginning of every meeting. It just keeps everything very consistent.
I'm supportive.
I'm supportive. And this can always be updated in the future if this is a disaster.
Can it be on the agenda so that people, the public sees it?
Yeah, agenda templates could be modified with, with this, yes.
If that's not too difficult.
Yeah. So just, so I have that, the three minutes per speaker, unless there's 10 or more, then it will be two, removing the donation or retaining the removal of the donation and retaining the mayor's discretion. Wanted to return to the direction we need to proceed for the May 21st agenda, advertising two minutes. Were you going to just do that for the Parkline item? Did we want to?
That's just. That's just.
Okay, we'll just go with our current practice. And then I also, city councilmember Dower had requested us to return with information on that removal of the second public comment period.
No, don't worry about it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And I think we are good on public comment unless there's further city council? No? Okay. So now we can go on to the voting procedures. Just as a refresher here, these changes include roll call voting when one or more city council members is participating remotely, which is required per Robert Tools of Order. And staff suggesting that the city council annually determine that roll call order vote. There is additional language about a tie vote during an appeal. And then lastly, the reconsideration language was updated to just kind of simplify it. With that, the city council may continue their discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation.
You as well.
We have consensus for the staff recommendation.
Fabulous. Okay, so the next one is city council member and city manager report outs. Make this a little bit larger. Okay, so the proposed is to combine the item, the city manager and the city council member report out, removing the language around placing an item on the agenda. And then also incorporating a report out form for the city council members to complete and/or attach, can be attached to the agenda.
Councilmember Nash.
So it says that council members may choose to submit the, the form. So what I'm thinking of is, many of us have Thursday night meetings, so we would not be able to submit a form for that item. So we would just do a regular report on.
And that's. And that would be totally fine.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate the flexibility of using the form. And I, I do also like the items in here of what agency, when, when, when did it happen, the summaries. So even if I don't end up having time to use the form, or if I have Thursday meetings, it does provide a helpful structure. And it also just reminds me how, how lovely and important it is that we sit on these regional bodies and have the opportunity to share back with residents who, who don't have the time or space to attend all these meetings. And it does make me also think about how the, the Bosca Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency Board, I think the vast majority, or at least around half of the members of that board do not even serve on city council, they're holdovers from appointments. And so there's no accountability. And I'm so grateful that we have a system and that we, as, as members of the city council, do have accountability to one another. And I wish that accountability was reflected more on other, on, on boards like Bosca. So just want to appreciate my, share my gratitude that we have this accountability.
Councilmember Wilson, do you have any feedback on this item? City councilmember Nash.
What do people think of attaching to this form, the agenda of your meeting? So people know, I'm saying. I just think there may be things on the agenda that are not being reported out, that someone might look at it and say, oh, that looks interesting and go talk to a council member.
It could be an optional thing if the person wants, but I wouldn't want.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to make it mandatory, but just as, as a suggestion.
I need to attach an agenda. I, I think that, I'm not sure, I actually need to check this first, but I believe that when it lists what city council members' responsibilities are, or which meetings that they have, which board that they're on, that there is a link to that website. So we could direct people to something that already exists as opposed to adding something else, if that works.
I was actually thinking if it's, if an agenda is in front of me, I'll read it. I probably won't go to the link, but that's fine. If someone wants to do it, they can do it.
Yeah, we can have the ability for a, a city council member to attach an agenda, attach a letter, have an attachment. I can also add a place to add a link, so it's an automatic hyperlink when the form's submitted.
I like the hyperlink idea because I wouldn't want someone to print out the whole agenda and then get a second agenda from a board meeting.
Um, one comment I would like to make is that it was proposed to combine city manager and city council member reports. I think it would probably be best to keep them as separate items. Seeing not, okay, so I'm all revert back to the, the two item. Okay, so as of now, I do have kind of updating the form just to be a little bit more flexible with adding attachments or adding hyperlinks. And then the rest of the proposed information. Again, I, I'll make it a little less restrictive with required fields. Because as the city council did mention, maybe reporting out on office hours or things that may not be agency-related. And then retaining the two separate agenda items for city manager and city council member reports. Yes, great. Anything else on city manager, city council member reports? Lovely, moving right along. Ever-popular proclamations and certificates of recognition. The updates to this section is adding the certificates of recognition, adding some defined request guidelines, and then the issuance of proclamations and certificates.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. A really minor, in the description of who we're celebrating, it says an event, a business, or an individual. And I think we should modify business to say entity or organization. And then I think there was a typo in the second to last paragraph. It should say certificate. It says proclamation cer, oh, I guess it could be. Oh, never mind. I take that back.
I agree about the change from business to organization or entity.
Oh, I see where it is now. So, sorry, where the bulleted, bulleted sections are, one of them says proclamations and certificate of recognition, and one of them says proclamation and certificate of recognition. So just for consistency, one of them needs to be fixed. Let's just, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm supportive.
Okay. So confirming we will be updating business to entity or organization. And then I will update proclamations and proclamation for both the bulleted lists. Is there anything else on proclamations and certificates? Okay. All right, and so I can't share attachments W through WA all on one screen. But what those attachments do have are proposed removals for portions that are governed by state law and by the city's municipal code. There are other portions that have been recommended to be removed because they are historical or not a procedure. And then there's some that were recommended to be added to new documents, like city manager policies, city council member orientation documents, minor updates, and the addition of sections for appointments, subcommittees, remote appearance, annual recess, and required trainings. I mean, if you'd like, we could just focus on like the portions to be removed that are governed by state law. The city council had questions or. This would be page F dash one point. This would be page F dash one point three six three, attachment W.
We do not have any questions on that, on that item. Ms. Heron.
Okay, and then the next would be uh portions that are historical overview, not a procedure or policy, and recommended to be added to um perhaps city manager policies or city council orientation documents. And that is going to be attachment Y, page, begins on page F dash one point three seven zero.
We do not have any questions on that item, Ms. Heron.
Thank you. Uh, next are minor updates. Do not significantly alter the substance or meaning of the content that is throughout the document. And then also the new additions, uh, attachment A double A, beginning on page F dash one point three nine one.
We have one question on this item, Ms. Heron.
Yes, please.
Um, under city council subcommittees, um, B where it says ad hoc subcommittees, B, ad hoc subcommittees may be created or, and dissolved at a city count, public city council meeting. Why may as opposed to uh must be? Which is true of the standing. Like, would we have an instance where a, ad hoc subcommittee was not created? At a council meeting?
I think the term may was added just to keep it broad and flexible. I know under ad hoc city, ad hoc subcommittees, A, it says and will be dissolved once its specific task is completed. Um, and then B, just again, gives a little bit more flexibility to the city council that uh ad hoc subcommittee may be created and dissolved at a city council meeting.
But does that mean that two, two people could create an ad hoc subcommittee outside of it? It just seems like it's something that you'd want the entire body to weigh in on?
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
If I might just chime in on this?
Yes, please.
I'm having difficulty thinking of a, a scenario where an ad hoc committee, subcommittee is not created at a council meeting, since you need a majority of the council to approve the ad hoc subcommittee. Um, but I do, I can think of scenarios where the, the uh ad hoc subcommittees are dissolved uh outside of a meeting. And that's usually when the, the ad hoc subcommittees um mandate has been fulfilled. So whatever they were supposed to do, um, you know, whether it was to plan a party or um investigate some, some issue, and that has been resolved, then the ad hoc subcommittee could be dissolved without a further reconvening of the council. Um, but in terms of the creation, the only thing I can think of is maybe like if it's created at some sort of joint meeting, uh, you know, the planning, uh, planning commission and council joint meeting or some other joint meeting of the council and some other body, they could create the, the ad, an ad hoc subcommittee at that joint meeting, but that would still be a meeting of the council. So I'd have to think about that some more, but uh I think like uh to Clerk Heron's comments, I think it's just to give some flexibility um to the creation and dissolution of the ad hoc subcommittee.
I would be concerned um about the opportunity for council members to create an ad hoc subcommittee. I, I certainly understand why they would, why it could be dissolved without a, a council meeting, but I, I would feel more comfortable. I would like to see it, that you, it should be, that it must be created at a council meeting.
Yes, I'm seeing nods that that is something that can be updated and returned with the next iteration of this. Um, and what we're discussing is updating ad hoc subcommittees, uh, B, that subcommittees uh will be created at a public city council meeting um and can be dissolved at a public city council meeting.
Thank you. We have one more item on this.
There are no other questions on the proposed items to be updated, appointment, subcommittees, remote appearances, annual recess, and required trainings. That does conclude uh staff's requested.
Okay.
Direction, but if there's anything else the city council has.
We have a one item, um, I believe councilmember Nash gave you the slide for the council to consider.
So this is a council policy in Redwood City that um seemed like it would be worth having somewhere. I don't know if it's the council policy manual is the correct place or um somewhere else. Uh, um, Mayor Taylor and I thought it would be worthwhile bringing it in front of the council.
And this came up in discussion uh with councilmember Nash and I because of uh districting and just making sure we are elected by a specific di- district, however, we do represent the entire city together.
Does it continue on to the second page?
It just goes through number eight.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes, councilmember Willison.
I like the spirit of it. I, the, being that's the first time I'm seeing it, it might be hard for me to react exactly to it, but I would love an opportunity to look at it um in more detail, but I, I like the idea. I am cognizant of the fact that we're missing one of our members who I know has opinions about districting, and so I would want him to weigh in on it as well. Um, the one thing that, um, just giving this, that's kind of unique, and I'm not sure how you all feel about it as we continue to, to think about this, is um sometimes uh the press or um sometimes with the districting, there's certain projects that are taking place um in districts or communications that come to CCIN um that are kind of specific to a district, and I don't know if that's something we want to address in here because I don't see it in here, but I know like um certain development projects that are, you know, centered in District Three, um, there's kind of an expectation that District Three representative will, will comment on it or um, or things like that. So um, those are my pieces of feedback, but um I, I'd love to see this come back for sure.
So I would actually um like staff to look at it and see if the, what changes they might think are worthwhile. Um, I forgot to do this before the meeting. Perhaps um city clerk Heron might remember, but I believe this was part of the actual independent redistricting. What they were thinking about was that you actually are elected by district and serve the entire council, so it's not something that is new. Um, but putting it into a policy like this would be. Thank you.
You can do recall either the application or the ordinance, it might have said something, I believe, was related.
Yes, it makes me wonder where, where that information currently lives. That stresses this importance of, of representing the whole of our community. Um, but I'm supportive of the, the, the spirit, I like that framing, the spirit of this, of making sure it's very clear to the council, to members of the public, uh, that we are acting as, as one city together. Um, and so I'd be supportive of having this in the procedures manual here or, and/or on that website that shows where's your district and how does city council work? And um, I'm, I'm not sure if the only and best place for it is right here, if there's something even more public-facing that might be a better spot for it, so members of the public, the press, and et cetera, can, can see uh, and understand that this is, this is who we are.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm definitely a supporter of your recommendation to have staff look at it and make their recommendation as to where this um can live um with council support. Are there any other items, city clerk Heron, that we need to cover in our city council procedures and policy?
I do not believe so. We, we've covered everything. Um, I'll take the direction received on uh what's being displayed now, and we can return that the next time we bring the manual back to the city council, whether it's in the manual or in another living document.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. We appreciate your presentation and your patience through that process. And at nine twenty-five, this meeting is adjourned.